What are you crunching away over there? Yeah, is that what it is? I hate those nights.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We call to order this meeting of the town council. The first item of business is announcements. By way of announcements, in the coming weeks, and we expect this to take effect on the first of January, that this hall will not be available for meetings. Therefore, town council meetings will be shifted to the school, to the school library specifically, where the school committee has its meetings. And all other boards and commissions, with a couple of exceptions, will be moved to the community center. There are a couple of conflicts in which we will use the 32 Commons, the Oddfellows Hall for meetings for some boards and commissions. But basically, we don't expect to have access to this space for a couple of months as they refurbish the interior. So we're looking forward to that. And I know that you think it's just fine, perhaps the way it is, but we're ready to change it. Any other announcements that should be made? Thanks. Next is the approval of minutes, the minutes of December 8th meeting.
Motion placed at December 8th, 2022. Town council meetings on file.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is old business number one, to receive letters of interest to fill a vacancy on the Little Compton Agricultural Conservancy Trust. You have in your packets two such letters of interest, one from Don McNaughton, who's here with us, and one from Victoria Talbot for that position. So, in keeping with our standard process, unless someone feels differently, we should schedule an interview with the two applicants and make a decision.
I agree. I think you have two excellent applicants there, and I'd be more than happy to talk with both of them at length about it.
Motion to interview before the next town council meeting at 20 past 6:00?
Second.
Or 6:30?
Thank you. If I could, that time slot has been asked for by the fire chief for two 15-minute interviews. I think we can do both. I think we could meet an hour early and do 15, 15, 15, and 15 before the meeting. But just to be... Perhaps the motion could be revised to meet before the next council meeting at an appropriate time, and we'll coordinate what that time is.
Okay. That'll be my motion then.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to conduct these interviews prior to our next council meeting on January 5th in the school library. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Don, and thank you, Victoria. The next is to acknowledge seven letters of interest received for the position of town solicitor. Those letters of interest are detailed in the notes that have been distributed. Just quickly, it is the incumbent, Richard Humphrey. It's William Dimitri with Amy Vary as the applicant. Gidley Sarly and Marusak with Per Vajh, if I'm pronouncing it correctly.
Say that again.
Per Vajh. It's a double.
Verbeige?
What do you say? Do you know the gentleman?
Just listen.
Oh. Keep that up.
Just forcing him to say it again, that's what it was.
Brennan, et cetera, forwarded to us by John Anderson, Conley Law Associates, William J. Conley, plus firm lawyers, and Louis Brisboy with Todd Romano and Mike Marcelo as partners. And finally, Anthony De Sisto Law Associates with a set of attorneys there. So there are seven applicants for the position, and we have polled the council in advance in an effort to choose a time in which we could interview. And I would seek a motion that, in keeping with what is... Oh, excuse me. Before I say that, there have been a series of letters of support filed supporting the reappointment of the current town solicitor, Richard Humphrey. So those have also been distributed to each person on the council. Any questions on that? All right. The date that we have mutually agreed with both council members and applicants for the position is Tuesday, the 27th of January, beginning at 4:00 PM. And I would request a motion that sets that date and that period of time. It turns out we're assigning it half an hour. So it would go from 4:00 to 7:30, I think, is the conclusion. From 4:00 PM to 7:30. The motion is made. Is there a second? It's second. Is there discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The final item of new business, of old business, is a request for proposals for solar panels on town roofs, submitted by Jim Locke. And he is here with us and will speak to that issue.
Say a very few words.
He'll say a very few words.
So this started around Labor Day, when about 60 different voters in town signed a petition to encourage the town council to move forward to putting solar on the panels of roofs that the town owns. Quite a lot of work has been done by a number of people in town. Most specifically, I want to acknowledge Peter Fox Penner, who couldn't be here tonight, who is a consultant for energy companies, specifically solar energy companies, who has been enormously helpful in putting this together. And obviously, Tony Texera has been a stalwart in helping getting this together. We put this request for proposals in your packet so that everybody had a chance to look at it. The only thing I'm gonna... I said this before, but I'll say it again. Turns out that Rhode Island is the fifth highest state in the country for electricity costs. And Little Compton is significantly higher than the average energy cost in the state of Rhode Island. So Little Compton is a little cheaper than Alaska and a little cheaper than Honolulu, but that's about it. So the upside for reducing our solar usage in town is considerable. I think that the request for proposals as it stands is actually pretty reasonable. A lot of people have looked at it. The reason that I'm hoping for a vote tonight to allow Tony to put this forward is that the real work here will be when we get requests, when we get proposals back. There are at least three different companies who have expressed clear-cut interest in doing it. I've actually polled them, and two of them came back and said that they would be more than happy to get proposals in within three weeks to a month, which is why I put... If we put this out sometime soon, we'll get at least two and probably three proposals by the end of January, which is the date that's listed here. And that gives the council time to evaluate the proposals, which I believe is, by some distance, the most important part of this process, to see whether, in fact, savings that people are claiming will exist actually do exist and whether or not the proposals will meet the standards of the town. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, let me turn the compliments back to say that your work on this has been diligent and, at the same time, considerate of other competing issues. And I'm very grateful for that because I think this is near-ready for prime time. And I would endorse our going forward with this. And I appreciate the work that both you and Peter have done to bring it to us. So thank you.
Has the solicitor taken a look at this?
I have not.
No.
Take a look at it.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to allow Tony Texera to go forward with this after it gets a quick scan by the solicitor.
Can I... Can I... Our discussion? Just a quick question. I mean, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole here at all, and I don't know much about this. Paul probably knows a whole bunch about it. It says in Section 3, "The proposer must propose to design, procure, install, and commission the PV energy system specified below." So I looked below, and I kept looking below. And I don't... Maybe I missed it. The only thing I could find is that the PV system on each structure shall utilize all available rooftops. And it goes on to say other things about it. "And the system shall provide alternating electric current in a form that meets all technical requirements set by PPL Rhode Island for a period of at least 25 years." Is this just making sure that the structures are safe? And you can put these panels on there, and they screw them in? Is that it? Is that PV? Is that the whole thing?
Photovoltaic is the name of the solar panels. That's what the industry refers to them as. So there's two parts of this... Several parts of this system specification. It isn't just the structural capacity of the roofs. It's also shading and angles. As we taught... It turns out that south-facing roofs that are shallow are the best, but shallow west-facing roofs are quite good. North-facing roofs aren't nearly... They don't ever put them on north-facing roofs, and not nearly as much. So it depends on the number of trees that might be shading it. It depends on the structure of the roof and the angles.
It also considers, when you read it, it's what it's driving to, although it doesn't seem very clear. I agree. It's the capacity of the roof to support the structure and the age of the roof materials.
We have sort of looked into that, as best I can tell. Assuming that this roof here, this west-facing roof is replaced, the other two roofs, I think, are new enough that it all... That they will be fine. We can't speak to the structural integrity of the roofs unless somebody who's an expert comes in, and that's part of this. So they will evaluate the structural integrity of the roof. All three providers.
When we did Solarize Little Compton, where we put arrays on residential roofs, that was indeed part of that process, was that not a PV installer, but a roofer... Not a roofer, but a structural person came and evaluated the degree to which the roof could sustain the addition of that kind of weight. So that is what happens. Any further discussion? Are you ready to vote? Just to rehearse, the vote was that the town...
The town administrator to move forward after a successful review by the solicitor.
Any...
Andrew's seconded.
Yeah. Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Aye. Signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all very much, really. I'm pretty excited by this.
The next item of business is a request from the Budget Committee for a recommendation on the salary for the town clerk for FY '24. And this is in conformance with the Home Rule Charter, Section 502B2, which prescribes that the town council offer the Budget Committee a recommendation so that they can move forward.
So I'm happy to.
Yep.
I'm sure my other four counselors know my feeling about this from the last go-around. And I'll make it brief. I like to bring up the position of town clerk from the bottom of the state and try to get it up closer to the middle. And I would personally recommend $78,000 a year for this base salary.
What's the salary right now?
$63,000.
$63,000. 2021 was $57,500. 2021 to '22 is $59,500. 2022, 2023 is $63,000. Health benefit, there's no co-pay. It's $25,518 a year annually. The dental's $860,000. Life insurance is $10,000. Pension, the town contributes. Vacation follows under contract, no more than 25 days. Sick time also follows a union contract. Merit pay was offered the past two years. In 2021 was $2,100,000. 2022 is $29,75,000. Bureaucment follows union contract. Working hours are 35 to 40 hours a week.
Well, that would appear to be a 20% increase. Is that what it comes to?
$15,000 more a year. Is it 20%? I didn't do the percent. I'm sorry.
I believe it's a minimum 20%. If it's $15,000, it's almost 25% increase.
One of the realities that we face is that we make comparisons internally, within the building, as to who gets what in terms of percentages. So there is a... This... An increase of that magnitude would place significant pressure on the bargaining position that the town has with its unions because it would be presumed that if you're able to do that for one of us, who isn't even in the union, then we would like the same consideration. So that's a reality. The acknowledgement of the value of the person that occupies the office is un... I have no argument. I am very, very grateful for what the clerk does and how well she does it.
I would just add to that that the position of the clerk, even though I agree with what you're saying, any town, it's a busy position. I've watched the clerk, and it's a hard job. And, you know, being at the bottom of the rate in the state needs to be corrected, in my eyes.
I think that another thing that should come into consideration is the fact that we've had trouble holding... I'm not saying this is for the clerk position, but with the department heads, we've had issues retaining people because we've been at a lower position than a lot of other communities in the state. So I think that definitely comes into consideration.
Yeah, I would agree. I guess I would classify this as a market correction for a term, if I'm grasping for one.
You know, I've said it before that it appears that... And you've said this with the police chief, that the police chief in Providence makes $160,000. So you think our chief should make $160,000, which he's probably got 500,000 people underneath him, while our chief has 10 people. I agree. Carol does a tremendous job. But if we give 25% raises, the chiefs... Both the chiefs are going to want 25% raises. Tony's going to come in and want a 25% raise. Joe's going to want a 25% raise. Everybody in town's going to want a 25% raise. What are we going to do about the 2% raises? And are you willing to go to the financial town meeting and tell these people they have to come up with another half a million dollars because we're giving all the chiefs 25% raises?
Just to be clear, I never said that Providence... I never compared the two chiefs' salaries.
You did compare the police chief from Providence.
That's incorrect.
When we were sitting here, you said the chief of police in Providence makes $150,000 to $160,000. And you asked the police chief, "Do you think you make enough money?" Because that's what the police chief in Providence makes.
That's incorrect.
That's not incorrect.
I think you're misremembering that. I think I stated the...
And you also asked the fire chief...
I stated the salary of the police chiefs.
You asked everyone that came in front of us, and you came up with the highest-paid person in the state, and you said, "Oh, you're only making $90,000. Don't you think she'd make $125,000?" You were willing to give every one of the department heads at least a 20% raise. This town can't afford that.
That's incorrect.
That's not incorrect.
What I recall is when I spoke about specifically what we're talking about tonight, I was talking about the clerk in Tiverton. I referenced the clerk in Portsmouth and the clerk in Jamestown. Those were the three that I pulled for what we were discussing. The other information that I had for the other candidates was for the information of the council, which was, you could find right on the internet.
Is anybody seconded in motion?
No.
No. Well, can I just say that part of my consideration that comes into this is when it comes to our department heads, are we paying them a livable wage where they could live in our community? And so if you can look at the wage that we're considering and say, "Yes, that person can live in our community comfortably," then sure, why not? If not, then I think that you should consider a little more than what we're paying them.
It seems to me the question is, in what manner would we do that? In other words, would we correct it in one year's time? Would we change... You're proposing that we go from a $59,500 to $63,000 step that we took last time and now take $63,000 and go to $78,000. That's a...
25% jump.
Yeah. It's just an unprecedented number.
I'm one of five here. I gave my opinion, and we know that three votes carry any vote. So it's my opinion. I'm here to share it and to explain what I think.
Right. Is there a second? If I could, I just want to get the motion made and seconded, or not.
I'm happy to make the motion to increase the clerk's salary... I recommend the clerk's salary to the Budget Committee to $78,000.
Second.
The motion's made and seconded. Yes, sir. What do you have?
Larry Anderson, I'm not on the council, so I'm not going to weigh in on the hard question, which is what the appropriate compensation is. But I think an issue worth considering is that the reason you're going through this process is because this particular position is pretty much the remaining position in town that's an elected position. Therefore, Carol can't, as a department head, can't get involved in her own compensation questions. A consideration... So the reason this is elected... There are other reasons why it may make sense to elect a town clerk who has a lot of responsibilities, say, involving elections, where you want somebody who's not beholden, say, to the council because then you have political considerations. However, my observation is one of the reasons why the town clerk's position deserves good compensation is that the nature of the job, the complexity of the job, is much different than it had been traditionally when it was a clerical position. And in the not-so-distant past, it was a part-time position. And so the real question will come in the future as to whether the traditional way of filling this by... As with all other professional positions in town, whether... And this is no reflection on anyone who may be in the office now, but the way this position has been filled is essentially by a kind of apprenticeship, people stepping up who've learned on the job. The incumbent, the longtime incumbent, has done a lot of work to involving computer systems, legal matters, that may be of a nature that they require a level of expertise that may be hard to find from an elected resident of the town. So that the risk you take... I'm recalling the situation in Tiverton, perhaps 10 years ago, when an elected treasurer was elected who was totally incompetent, and the town was stuck with that position. And so the level of compensation that's built into the job becomes an attraction in itself for people who might run for the office who have no qualifications and might get elected. And then where are you? So I think the real crunch is going to come if the time comes, as it will, when there's a discussion about whether the job can continue as an elected position. So I think this is a good discussion, but I think there are other issues that may need to be taken into account in considering the compensation for this position.
Right.
So at $63,000 plus $25,000 for just health benefits, that's $88,000. At $78,000, adding the $25,000, that's $103,000. So when you say compensation, you're going to figure that's what it's costing. But taking the great job that Carol does and putting it to one side, just looking at the numbers. I mean, that's what we're actually talking. And that doesn't include vacation time. But that really doesn't cost any more money. But the compensation for the healthcare does.
And that puts you right in the median income for the town of Little Compton.
Yeah. And that's... Yeah, and that's, so she's going to go to, if she, at 63K, no raise, you add the 25 for the health benefits, it's 88,000. If she goes to 78,000, and you add the 25, she's at 103,000. So that's what the taxpayer is paying. And not, I'm not getting into personalities or job performance or anything like that. I'm just crunching the numbers. That's a, that's a, so it's a jump. It's a jump from 88,000 to 103,000 in actuality. That's what you voted for. What was the raise last year, monetary?
From 59.5 to 63,000.
So is it $3,500 raise?
It was 2,000 the year before that.
Motion's made. They're on the table, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. I move a 6% pay raise to $66,780. Be recommended to the Budget Committee.
Second, third.
Discussion.
What's the final number? I'm sorry, what did you say?
$66,780 would be a 6% raise.
Which is a bigger raise than it was last year.
Still barely livable in this community.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you.
No, he wrote a nay. He went aye-nay.
I said aye.
You sound like aye-nay.
I'm sorry. Let me correct myself. I heard two ayes. The motion carries by a vote of four to one. Thank you. The next item of business is to consider approval of Amendment 1 to the Little Compton Municipal Employees Union Local Collective Bargaining Agreement. What this does is provide a maternity and parental leave policy, which it does not have.
And this was agreed upon by?
It comes from a discussion in which both sides have had an opportunity to review, yes. It is ready for the union president and myself to sign on behalf of our respective organization.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And there's a second amendment, not to this contract, but to the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the firefighters. This one specifies a shift schedule for the employee who is assigned to the day shift. If you recall, when we went to the 24-hour shifts, we didn't have any, we had eight people assigned to eight 24-hour shifts. And this, this takes the ninth person and gives this person a prescribed schedule, which also averages 42 hours a week, which all other firefighters have to do, et cetera, et cetera.
Chief's on board with this?
Yes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'll sign on behalf of the council in both of those cases. Next item is a communication from the Coastal Resources Management Council, a proposed rulemaking in public hearing that's going to be held January 10. The news in this is there's a program that they have, I'm not sure where they got the C, but they've entitled it OSCR, Ocean State Adaptation and Resilience Fund. And interestingly, we have already been working with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank as a result of our municipal resiliency grant. They have offered to expand that, to do more than what we were doing, which is South Shore Town Way and remind me the third. No, it's Taylor's Lane that gets added.
John Dyer wrote.
John Dyer wrote. It hasn't begun, yes. So there were three, we made three proposals. But if you remember, there was a town-wide opportunity for people to join in discussions, and all of that data was recorded. And what the Infrastructure Bank came back to us with was, we've hired an engineering firm who looks at Taylor's Lane and says, this looks to us like another place that we could make a difference. And so, would you like to have a grant in that area? We said, yes, we would. And so we've been working with them, and now it is formalized in this process. So I say all that in the sense that I don't think we need to be involved in the public hearing. I don't believe there's some error or difficulty in this. I think it's an opportunity, and we're taking advantage of it. But I leave it to your judgment.
Motion placed on file. Second, discussion on this?
Yeah.
I mean, it's only $4 million funding, so I don't know how far that's going to go. But I keep saying this, that that Road to Secana Point, where the launching ramp is, is going to be underwater one of these days.
Yes.
So we need to think about doing something with the state about raising that up, because the last high tide we had, there was seaweed in the middle of the road, which means it came up the launching ramp into the road. And that was at a high tide, not a storm tide.
And you had convinced me of that, and I remembered that. And if you look at Section 1.5, it specifically eliminates or does not permit the raising of roads. Now, in 2C, projects elevating, repairing, or replacing infrastructure, constructing existing location experience except as otherwise. So we'll need to look at this. I don't dismiss the possibility that we might be able to, but it looks to me like this, this particular grant is not there. I agree with you completely. Secana Point Road has got to be
I'm going to have a chat with Luda Palmer.
Okay.
Very shortly, because he's the one that's been helping me with the launching ramp, getting the launching ramp, a new launching ramp. And then when the seawall was starting to fall in, he was very instrumental in getting that seawall shored up so that we wouldn't lose it. As I said, the seawall was ready to go. Once it went, we were going to lose that road in front of the aqueduct.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, also, Gary was instrumental in getting the pipe fixed. You seem to forget the pipe. The pipe is quite critical today.
Yes. Today. Right. Yeah, so I Your caution is certainly well-placed. And let's see if that can be worked in here. Regardless, let's keep it on the front burner so that we can find a way to get it done. The motion then has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The consent file.
Motion placed, consent filed. Consent calendar on file unless anybody wants to comment or question or anything.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
Well, please note that there was one added to the bottom of the social. I thought administer your head to submit.
Right.
So your total is different from what you had initially.
The one that you brought to the meeting might not be, or would not be the same.
The one I gave you on your table tonight is the correct number.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. There being no further business before us, I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Andrew, that was me. I put a piece of paper across. That's